Let's get started. I will be your chair this evening. I'll call the meeting to order on time. We have a quorum. I think everybody, I hope, has the agenda in front of them. Any changes to the agenda? Do we feel good? All right, we don't need to vote on that, right? We just proceed with our lives. Okay. Brief announcements by authority members. I'll announce on Bucky's behalf that he cannot be here this evening is also not able to attend remotely. Okay. A public comment. Jason, do we have any members of the public joining?
Not virtually or in person.
Okay. Oh, right. Brief announcement. Thank you. Right.
You did.
I did. I didn't.
You did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, you did.
You just buried it.
It was so brief that I couldn't keep up.
Consent agenda. Any feelings, changes, objections, questions, whatever about the consent agenda this evening, which is just the updated financial report. Okay, we have to vote to accept that as a consent agenda, right? All right.
Moving second consent agenda, appropriate consent agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Asked. Approval of minutes. Sent out the minutes. Our able secretary, I understand you got feedback from me, but it was of no consequence.
You and Bucky.
Okay.
Very minor things and yeah, I'll try to send the minutes and not the notes next. It's the second time I've done that.
We got there.
Yeah.
Okay, and we vote to accept the minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes. Ever in mind? Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We can move on to old business. God, I look forward to when we stop talking about this. The body twenty twenty one update. I turn it over to the chief administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share a desire to hopefully be done talking about body twenty one very soon and have an ambition to actually have it all wrapped up by fiscal year, end of fiscal year twenty five. So we met with Bright Speed a couple more times since our last meeting, also met with D H C D a couple of times. As per the email that I sent out to the authority with the actual file listing all of the locations that they believe they have passed and that they are to use their language surrendering. To review, one thousand four hundred and thirty passings were agreed upon during the twenty twenty four amendment. We discussed it in twenty twenty three and actually executed on the amendment in twenty twenty four. Bright Speed has confirmed one thousand four hundred and sixteen of those passings have been passed. And the remaining fourteen are being surrendered. D H C D has stated that it would prorate its funding to reflect the change in passings. And Bright Speed has committed that should we offer or should we find a different body or other project taker for these passings? They would not object. Which was my primary goal is to make sure that we weren't going to have any issues finding an alternative to expeditiously get these locations served. So that mission was accomplished. Just to give you an idea of those fourteen locations, so I had the broadly list highlighted here, but if you dig in, several are kind of on the periphery of the different project areas.
With that last area, so what do we call that?
So this is actually the oh gosh, it's been so long. I believe this. Yes, this was the Dick Woods Road project area and to give you some idea, you know, what sorts of objections they had to serving some of these locations. Twenty Goose Neck Lane is one address right in the middle of a development that happens to have crossed the boundary of those polygons that we drew so many, many, many months ago. And they would have to cross the interstate and then build through a neighborhood to get to that one address. So while it is still viewed in our eyes as surrender because they had the opportunity to choose not to serve these locations and to give us a different list. They didn't. They gave us this list. Two, these two locations right here, forty twenty five Martin Valley Farm Road and nine Marshall Road. You can only access those from Luisa. So their, their objection is, well, we're not serving Luisa, so we can't build into Luisa and then come back. And then this is the last bucket and these several, several of these are very frustrating because they are very much adjacent to places that they are serving. If you look in particular at eighteen fifty three Thompson Ford Lane, that address has served by twenty one address to the north, to the west, to the south and to the east. But they're electing not to serve that location. These are, at this point, I think, an acceptable list of locations that we won't be able to get into this project. But I think that there is still a lot of laudability to the fact that we were able to get one thousand four hundred and sixteen locations served in a relatively timely manner.
So with these and then back up, I know the one was across sixty four, but there you got Landemar. I mean, that's an area I'm familiar with. So are all of the rest of that subdivision served under body twenty twenty one or are they?
Actually, all of the rest of Landemar is actually in body twenty two.
That's right.
And I think that there's, you know, when other projects were being scoped, they were being scoped with the body twenty one locations in mind. We are going to work with anyone that's available in the area to ensure that all of these locations get served as expeditiously as possible. I can tell you that my only, the only locations that concern me are these two locations on the Luisa side. I think that those could be challenging for somebody to pick up. That eighteen fifty three Tomford Sun Lane, because again, it's it's got a lot of bright speed around it. And so aside from bright speed, it's hard to imagine who else is going to pick it up. And then fifty three sixty four Stony Point Road simply because it is set awfully far back. It is off the road some distance. And so whoever we find to pick that up, they have to be willing to, you know, to, to, to take that long draw. But I'm going to be working over the next couple of months to make sure that we've got somebody to pick up all of these and then go from there.
When, when you say that it's when you, when you say it's prorated and I think about these fourteen I'm, I'm just sort of imagining worst case scenario, these are the fourteen hardest ones to get to and suddenly they're being left off and that's convenient.
And I think that that's for, for some of these, I think that there are going to be challenges to the other one that I left off is the one at the bottom of the screen here. That's forty seven eighty two Broadhead Mountain Trail. That one sits all by itself. Those might be challenging to find taker for. We are fortunate in that once the bead round is announced, there will be an opportunity to add to it. So whoever gets toward the bead bit might have the opportunity to add these to that to that proposal, in which case they can negotiate with the state to get more funding to cover these. But again, I think that there, we're going to have opportunities to move these into at least a plan to serve state before the end of the year. Fiscal year, in fact.
As I'm recalling, the two B requests we, or applications we've received so far have been either about existing constellation or hypothetical constellation satellites. Is satellite really the only way to serve some of these?
The only applications that were submitted were actually by Bright Speed and Comcast.
Oh, am I? Am I misremembering?
Oh, we did. We did get a, an interest from Starlight.
Yeah, from, from Piper.
Okay. And they finally launched some satellites like last week. I got something in the air like twenty, but whatever. It's a start.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm just trying to understand other than just beaming internet through their frickin roof, like how, how you get around some of these obstacles that they're highlighting already.
So I think for some of them, they're going to be opportunities. So for instance, the, the dress that started all of this was not going to be served. And then it just so happened that Firefly needed to put a pedestal on their property. And given that they were going to be putting a pedestal there, they said, hey, would you like us to also serve you? And they said, of course, that sounds great. So I think that there are going to be opportunities for a lot of these to get picked up in existing projects.
I also I kind of share your concern about the, the tubes on, on kind of the eastern edge, just outside. But maybe for like, like I see that as like such a that's such a political failing, right? Because it's not a true obstacle. It's an entirely jurisdictional government created obstacle. And I don't know. I don't have a complete thought there, but it, it's particularly frustrating.
Understandable. I think that I will share more about what I think we can accomplish with these addresses over the next few weeks. To the point about prorating in terms of estimates, these are the estimates that we have. I did speak to D H C D. They need to tweak the values slightly because their process is to actually go by the original amended prorating. So they actually need to go all the way back to twenty twenty three, look at the figures for when we thought there were going to be one thousand four hundred and sixty six locations. And forty six were removed. And so they're going to prorate it based on that. So the proposal we have is to echo whatever their prorating is. I did my figures here based on one thousand four hundred and thirty and losing fourteen. I believe what D H C D is going to do is go the other way and go with one thousand four hundred and sixty six, divide the original total amount that they were going to contribute. That's two million, not two million, two hundred and thirty one thousand, but a different figure. Divide that up and then multiply it by one thousand four hundred and sixteen. The numbers aren't going to be far off of these numbers. It's the difference between one thousand five hundred and fifty two dollars per passing and one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars per passing. So the numbers are going to be close, but this is a approximate amount of the change in, in our prorating. If we were to go that way.
What was Bright Speed's reaction to that, if I can ask?
They are eager to move this project to completion and close it. And they had no objections to a prorated reamers.
I want to echo President Andrew's point about like being some of the hardest addresses to serve. That is frustrating. If Bright Speed wished to kind of not serve just a few addresses, it'd be cool if they were easier to reach. I appreciate how and why it turned out like that. I'm glad that the number turned out to be substantially fewer than it looked like it could be. But yeah, the cost of serving each one of those is substantially more than the cost of those passings. And one of the deals with having them take this entire tranche of addresses is they serve the hard ones and they serve the easy ones. And that wasn't how it panned out. But I do like to imagine future owners of those addresses. Want to figure out like, what's the deal with broadband? Is it anybody looking out for me? I'd like to know that it is possible for them to see the county staff and a county board went over their individual addresses and talked about what we're trying to do to get those individual homes served. I think that's something that we can feel good about. And I'm just comparing this to the meetings that we had as an organization five years ago. We were nowhere close to the point of being able to put individual points on a map and saying, what are we going to do about this house? So I'm glad we've gotten to that point. I'm glad you're doing more to figure out how to serve those individual folks. It's not a problem I'm thrilled to have, and I'm not delighted with, with Bright Speed on that front, but I'm glad that we have that resolution. And I also just want to say how much I appreciate your point. It stuck out to me. There was something different to me about the Luisa boundary ones, but I didn't have a moment to think about it. Right. It is, it is a it's not like a, an interstate in the way, you know? It's, it's, it's a bureaucratic obstacle that is even tough for us here, including members of the Board of Supervisors to figure out how to resolve because it's an interjurisdictional problem.
It's like, it's like it's asking for Ezra Klein to come into the room and yell at me about it or something.
Dude has a really bad grasp on federal broadband funding.
Oh, I, I know. I've seen the, I've seen the critiques of it.
About to become a seven. Just briefly, the last slide, the project deadline was extended to June second, hence my eagerness to not have to extend it again and close this out by the end of this fiscal year. The remaining activities, aside from making a decision about how to prorate, if to prorate, is to handle the remittances and closeout. Bright Speed is awaiting your all's decision and D H C D's decision about what the value should be, at which point they'll submit updated invoices. As long as we can kind of sync up the closeout process, which basically involves a programmatic and documentation review of this long project. Then we can forego the ten percent withholding that was previously discussed. Because at this point, construction is long over. And so there's really no value in holding on to ten percent. So D H C D is fine with us just submitting for reimbursement, the full hundred percent, so long as closeout is acceptable. And this slide, I apologize, I didn't update it. We scheduled the meeting for earlier this morning to discuss closeout and procedures and the remittance procedures. And so all of that is kind of lined up and ready once invoices are received, updated invoices are received.
With the, with the four that they're not able to serve, kind of going off from the point we were just discussing. And we're talking about how our overall, you know, contract is going to be prorated. I, I guess I'm thinking, you know, the, the baked in understood value bakes in, like you were saying, right? The, the good and the bad of it. Meaning I would assume the value per passing represents kind of a median difficulty passing. Is there an argument we can make? Is there room we can make under whatever agreement we've signed to say, actually, we're not going to pay the median value for, we're not going to take the prorata median value for the fourteen that you failed to obligate? These are more value. The value of that difficulty was baked into our median.
That feels like a rich.
You want a greater amount.
And I think
Does, does that make sense? Am I, that's what I'm explaining, that would be picked up.
I, I will actually, I will defer in terms of what ABBA's abilities here are, but I will note your all's decision making on funding and is limited to the ABBA contribution. The state will, you know, the state will set its value and they're reimbursing us. And so, you know, they certainly could Bright Speed certainly could make their own argument that they want more from the state and ask us to pay that. Whether the state is willing to reimburse us for that more. So we are, there is a limit to how much impact we can have on the total dollar value. But Richie, I'll let you chime in in terms of options there.
So I mean, you're absolutely right. We're obligated, we're obligated to pay what the state transfers us to pay to them. That's, we're just kind of going between in that respect. In, in terms of the, in terms of our agreement with, with Bright Speed, we have the original agreement, which wasn't satisfied. Then we have the, we have the first amendment. There was a notion that if they don't complete the project, they didn't do it by a certain deadline, they're not entitled to any of the funds. But it was always my opinion that if they had substantial performance, that, that would have to reimburse them for substantial performance. And so then the question just comes, as you all have identified, they, they haven't satisfied the first amendment. And so they're in a situation again where it's, it's gauging the, the measure of their, of their performance. And, you know, I, I was, based on your comments, I pulled up part of the, of a century length agreement and they had had some itemization of passings in different areas. I don't recall which area you were talking about, but some were more expensive. For example, Olgar Heights was, if I get the right one, it was coming in at our contributions were three thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars per passing. And then wherever the other ones are, they could be slightly less. Campbell Cove was at about a thousand dollars per passing. So that's something that could be formulated and presented to them. I don't profess to be an expert on, you know, the technicalities of doing that. I trust Jason to do it. And, and I know he said the number that he had identified now could be adjusted further, but how big of a difference it'll make, I, I don't know. But
Seems like we're dealing with a small potential dollar values.
I don't know. And also hearing the time issue of June second and today's May fifth.
Right. And I will offer, I think if if the authority would like to hold on making a decision about how to prorate, I think my focus would be to get you guys a firm understanding of how many of these locations we would actually struggle to get moved into a different project. Because I think that ultimately, if we can move majority of these into another project, you know, the time that we're going to spend, and I'll be blunt, we've probably spent five hundred thousand dollars of staff hours on this project. It's been since twenty twenty. It was a lot of Mike's time, a lot of my time, a lot of Richie's time, a lot of your all's time. So to a certain extent, we are arguing about the tail, not the, the bulk of what has been put into the project. So I, I will take your guidance and, and so my suggestion is if, if you guys want to look at some alternatives, we can delay this decision and I'll leave it to Richie in terms of, do we need a special meeting to make a decision at that point? Or can we move on some, on a, on a motion by email?
What is worth, I'd like to suggest that personally, I am not prepared to have that fight over. It's not fourteen because most of those fourteen, it sounds like we can relatively easily absorb into other projects. So there, there's not a good argument you made. There's a bigger passing cost there. It sounds like we're talking about a much smaller number of passings. And I think whatever additional money that we would get from Bright Speed on that would be offset in staff time. It would only be worth it, I think, if we wanted to have a fight with Bright Speed.
As, as Chair Andrews can, can tell you, I, I am very quick to want to hold a company's feet to the fire over failing to oblige contracts. It is, it is a thing I like to do. So I, I appreciate the point, the staff hours while waiting.
And Jason, can you go back to slide seven? Just to clarify the the state contribution, the prorated, they, they, they have defined that or you're suggesting?
They have said that they will prorate and they are putting together their, their exact figures for how they're going to prorate.
Is it consistent to what you're showing here?
It is, it is going to be relatively close.
So we're, really, we're following the same methodology as the state. So we're going to have the same proportion.
We, we should. We, we will match it. Whatever process they use, we will just repeat their process with our portion.
Be problematic.
Is Bright Speed going to require a second amendment? I mean, I started drafting one up. I presume they'd want to write a second amendment.
So the state is handling this in closeout. So they're not amending any aspect of this. They're just in the process of closing it out, they're saying that the delivered passings ended up being different. And so the reimbursement was different. So they're not going to, there's not going to be another change in agreement between us. If you think there's value in having an amendment.
And I don't know about an amendment, but certainly when payment is tendered, that there's a release. From them, saying they're done. Thank you for the payment. We're done. We're not going to pursue it. Because you had mentioned, also surrendering those. They're closing out. And I don't know what documents that D H C D presents in terms of closeout. That may be that closeout says you're done.
I think that that is the expectation. I, I, and, and, you know, I will say, this is my, this is my first closeout. I have always found it a little intriguing that these public private partnerships with these projects, we have a private enterprise that joins with us, but we are the grant holders. And then the private enterprise kind of does the work and then has to be present at the end to, to make sure that everything was delivered acceptably. The documentation that they provide to D H C D includes a list of speed tests for a random assortment of addresses within the project. My next task is actually to make sure that that random assortment actually was, is within the project. And then a, a a comprehensive listing of the delivered passings. And then a very, very large and onerous document that actually lists everything that they spent. And luckily, we don't pour over that document. That is for D H C D to pour over. But those are the elements of closeout that they have submitted. And I think that is with the expectation that once this is over, the grant is over and, and we are released. If you think that there's value in perhaps asking great speed for a letter to that effect. That's reasonable. The other thing is, you know, they can only ask us for money that they invoice us for. And they're only planning on sending us two invoices, one for whatever we determine is the ABBA portion and whatever the state determines is the state's portion.
I'm comfortable saying what develops in that respect. You know, we can close out without doing another amendment. That's helpful. So would you be looking for a motion to authorize you, Bucky and, and Walden, perhaps to sign whatever documents are needed to close out this project with ABBA tendering five hundred fifty four thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars and ten cents?
Are you interested in the prorated portion consistent with D H C D's prorated portion?
Their portion should be a little bit smaller than our portion. And so I think that Richie's figure.
There is the max.
Yes.
Do we find it if we need that movement? Or the motion, excuse me?
I believe that is the motion that, that, that would be appropriate.
I think Jason would like it before he strokes a check for half a million dollars.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Alright. I will make the comment that any additional staff time negotiating this pales in comparison to the cost of mitigating.
I, 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 I hope to never be involved.
Anything else on value twenty twenty one?
And if you haven't had a chance to sift through an Excel sheet with one thousand four hundred and thirty locations, if you have any questions about them, feel free to look it over and give me a call.
Jason, thank you for sending that map information, actually. I was, I was thinking, I, I spent some quality time curled up with that to see the addresses and in dispute.
I, I, yeah. Alright.
Want to body twenty twenty two?
Body twenty two continues at pace. We still haven't heard a resolution to the remaining easement issues. We're hopeful that a, a agreement can be reached for the two areas in Almarl where there were easement issues blocking that I did touch base with with D H C D on just the question. And they did make a point that, that there where there is local opposition that prohibits them from being able to access passings, they don't prorate at that point. They actually just honor those locations or honor those costs based on the fact that Firefly did its best effort to reach those locations. But they are eager to actually cover all of these locations. And so they've been working to try to get over this easement issue as, as quickly as they can.
My understanding was a major easement issue was to go along with them to grant easements that were needed. But I also was aware that there were some map issues where some easements were that just didn't match up with where who owned the property and saying they need to go to square meters. Well, that's not who owns it.
And ultimately, those are, they have contracted with a legal firm to process all of their easements. uh to process all of their easement issues and and uh acquisitions of easements. And that is an issue for uh for them to work out. Um, uh, uh, this is referring, I believe, to to constituent. Yeah, and we did connect them with uh O W C, I believe, is the is the company that they're using um to work with them to to get resettled. And they were able to transmit, actually Augie uh reached out to try to get, try to help them out uh to transmit the files that they had, because they were rather large, to uh O W C. So I believe that that part got taken care of. I don't know whether it's been resolved, though.
Okay, my my biggest concern is that we don't conflate the two.
Um, right.
And they suddenly say, well, we tried and we didn't get the easement, when it's really we didn't know where the property line was.
Yeah, and and uh, you know, uh, I think that they uh they chose their partner diligently and that partner is is working through those issues as quickly as they can. Um, right, sorry, Firefly has not suggested uh the need for an extension, which is encouraging. Um, so I think that they are still on schedule, uh regardless of the easement issues and any other issues that have come up. Um, there had been no change since our last meeting in terms of the deliveries. We are expecting uh that within about a month and a half, an awful lot of these locations are going to get.
Whole lot of summer 2025.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whole lot of spring 2025.
The uh, of note, uh, the R E C uh are uh, I believe, are are being worked on now. Um, Avalanche and Power, uh, they're going to be shifting their make-ready crews from some of the other uh Rise projects to uh Almarle to try to get that knocked out. And we're hearing reports of people saying, hey, I saw a bunch of trucks on my road, uh, which is always a great sign. Um, because it means that people, um, one, are eager and paying attention, and two, uh, activity is happening and they're seeing it. And so um, we expect a lot of uh deliverables uh in the next month. Um, and then even more uh over the the following uh several months. Um, I believe uh the deadline for this project is in August. Um, they are giving themselves in terms of summer 2025 to the end of September. Um, so there is a little bit of a mismatch there, but uh, like I said, they have not said that they need an extension on anything. So we're going to remain hopeful. Uh, and tying this briefly into the ARPA conversation, we have uh B A O has its own ARPA grant with Firefly uh that is concurrent with this. Um, we are eager to get that money out the door, um, just as we are eager to get the body uh 22 money out the door. Um, they have not been able to provide us an invoice for those for that portion yet. Um, that it's not a matter of not working on it, it's simply a matter of getting the accountants to sit down and with the G I S people and parse out exactly what percentage of those costs belong here, what percentage belong there. Um, so they're working on that right now.
So this is for, but it bears repeating, it is just a pleasure to work with C V A C Firefly on this, where they give us a schedule and then they do what's on the schedule. And then it's done. And then when we have questions, it's not, I'll get back to you. It's like Gary saying, oh, yeah, no, I know the guy who lives at that address. I went to school with his sister. Uh, yeah, no, I can fix that for you. It's it's, and of course, this is part of a larger project and, you know, we're working a multi-county thing and that helps. But uh, this is like a project on easy mode compared to what we just discussed for 2021.
Um, and then just the highlights in terms of their last uh uh progress report. Um, and I will note, um, these progress reports are on what they have been invoiced for from their contractors and have paid out. So this is lagging by about three to four months. Um, so even where you see we're at 1,000 passings, um, which is, I think, a great uh milestone. Uh, we were at 1,000 passings three months ago. Um, now we're going to be well past that. Um, and then the Dominion portion uh is unfortunately the same file. So I did that wrong and I apologize. Um, you know, and Bucky caught that and I did not update that. So my apologies, I will get you guys uh an updated Dominion uh report. Want to go back to my desk? Any other questions on body 22?
Well, one to the yeah, update.
Three things I wanted to cover with you guys. Uh, the first is an application that we recently submitted for the Department of Housing and Community Development's Digital Skills Literacy and Devices Program. Um, the progress on preparing our digital opportunity plan. Um, and then implications of federal program review. The D S L D program is the state's version of the Digital Equity Act State Capacity Grant Program. Uh, they have about $15 million worth of funding. Um, and they capped regional efforts at $400,000, um, no matter the size of the region, and local efforts at $200,000. Um, the D H C D uh after the application deadline announced that they had received 47 applications for $13 million in funding. Um, our application uh despite the cap is for uh to serve all six localities. Um, we think it's important um to uh recognize that in terms of where the community partners we want to work with are serving, uh, they're serving not just Almarle County residents, they're serving um residents from Green, from the city, from Nelson, from Louisiana, from Savannah. Um, and so trying to uh support those organizations while also putting uh bumpers on how they can spend that money um would be really hard on them and it wouldn't serve the region particularly well. Um, so our our goal is to create a digital inclusion ecosystem um that covers all of the activities that we want to see happening and serves anyone within the region. Um, this is the strategy that uh this is a strategy that we've kind of been been focused on since the very beginning. Um, and I think is going to be, we think is going to be the most effective uh at serving our 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 region and our partners. Um, we wanted to pursue that strategy to the tune of more than 1.2 million dollars. Um, and we approached D H C for guidance on how to structure a series of applications, uh, if not, if if not one application, um, to achieve that level. Um, and the, there wasn't a suitable option presented. Um, and so we submitted at that cap. Um, the $400,000 cap will provide uh sufficient funding for a more limited program than we envisioned. Um, and for just one year, um, and rather than the three years that we planned. Um, we are hopeful uh that D H C D will uh considering uh the shortfall in application uh applied funding requests and funding available. Um, we'll see if it to fund our entire project. Um, but we will uh wait and see and expect uh plan for uh just what we can accomplish with that $400,000. Any questions on that?
So there just wasn't a way to find a to take our six localities and temporarily break them up into six applications and then.
The mechanism that they suggested for that uh wasn't uh wasn't one that our locality partners uh were willing to uh to consider, uh, especially on shorter notice. Um, because it would have involved signing over uh fiduciary and grant management rights for something they would apply for to us. Um, and uh without the time to develop a broader M O A that lays out exactly what role everybody plays. Um, it was hard to envision a way that once one uh locality partner said that that wasn't something that was going to fly for them, it's harder to envision that we were going to be able to convince five others to uh to play along. So um, we 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 went back to D H C D to say, you know, this doesn't seem like it's going to be, it's going to work. What else do we have? And unfortunately, they said that then the cap is the cap. So, um, again, we're hopeful that if they've got $15 million to spend and they only got $13 million in applications, that there might be some room for them to increase our funding a lot.
We have a plan to approach them about that?
Um, once we hear awards, uh, and and we'll talk more about when we might hear awards. Um, then we will uh make a point to uh bring up the opportunity to get us more funding. Um, but that is uh probably uh six months to uh longer away. Um, the digital opportunity plan, our partner is E P R, who's also, I believe, working on some of the uh AC44 work. Um, and they have been holding focus groups and stakeholder interviews uh in all of our partner localities. Uh, this has been a really rich and useful uh effort. Um, some of the insights uh that were most helpful is to discover that both rural uh residents and uh urban community members um are pretty well aligned in their goals and ambitions. Um, they want to be able to work in an online setting. They want to be able to work from home, they want to start their own online businesses. Um, so to us, this is a good indication that there's demand for the upskilling uh and the devices and the uh broadband support that we're providing. Um, and that uh the fruits of that uh those efforts are going to be increased economic activity uh amongst these populations. Um, we are uh going to continue doing some more um engagements. Um, we also noticed that the barriers uh are remarkably consistent. Um, affordability and skills are the biggest uh gaps that exist, um, and they are consistent in both the rural and in urban context. Um, the expectation is over the next few weeks, we're going to wrap up engagements and actually start uh and putting the plan together. Um, E P R will be handling obviously the engagement and insights portion, and we will handle uh demographics as well as the implementation and conclusion. Any questions on that? Eager to have that plan in front of you guys. Um, a brief bead update to kind of uh jump ahead a little bit in the uh in the agenda. Um, the negotiation cycle uh has been completed by D H C D. Um, Almarle was not involved. Uh, the negotiation cycle was for areas where 100% of the locations were not included in an application. And so you just reopen the opportunity for the applicants that did apply in those areas uh to see if they'd like to pick up anything else. Um, we were not involved, because both of our applications covered 100% of the eligible locations. Um, D H C D is expected to announce awards before summertime. Uh, but uh, those awards are pending approval by N T I A. Um, and we are expected to see an award that will cover, like I said, 100% of the locations. Um, which brings us to implications of federal program review, both bead and uh the Digital Equity Act, managed by National Telecommunications and Information Administration. The new uh, the new administration's nominee to lead N T I A has not been uh installed yet. Um, and the normal process for getting these approvals um takes about three months. Um, after the initial reviews and after uh the state process plays out, you have to add another two to three months just to get the federal approvals through. Um, with no uh administrator for N T I A yet. Um, and the possibility um that there will be other delays. Um, a lot of people have been kind of diligently trying to find out what is the expectation. Um, and there have been several reports, although we have not gotten any confirmation from N T I A, uh, that uh there will be an ongoing program review. Um, this has come both from the legislative side as well as from uh elsewhere in the administration. We really don't know what that means. Um, we really don't know what the uh implications for when these uh projects are going to get approved. D H C D has not provided any additional guidance. Um, they are just moving forward um with the expectation that uh eventually uh both Digital Equity Act uh grant funding and bead grant funding will get awarded. Uh, but without a firm timeline on this. So, any questions on that?
Turn to businesses, is there an F M F that we all have? Are there any other members or matters that the board wants to bring to our attention? Okay, I, we just need to adjourn then. And anything? Seconded. I think we just adjourn, we can vote. They just stand up, that's how we know.
And yes.